I call the meeting to order for March 18th. It is 7:03. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is announcements. So, I'd like to welcome our interim town administrator, Mr. Bill Ross. He had got last week under his belt and he's back to help us through these times with our budget and annual town meeting and all of those requirements coming up. So, we appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you want to share with the board and the townspeople a little further about yourself.
I am a native of Iowa. Attended the University of Iowa and received both my bachelor's and master's degree there. I've done further work at the Senior Executive Institute at the University of Virginia. I'll do my best, I'm not real loud. I've done additional work at the University of Virginia, the Senior Executive Institute there. I've worked in several states. The longest time was in South Dakota. And I lost a wife to cancer while I was there and after a couple of years, needed to be in a different place, so I ended up in Michigan. I was blessed to meet Michelle and I've had two wonderful women in my life and I feel blessed by that. I retired in Michigan and was recruited to Mansfield by a search firm for a number of reasons. I have worked in a couple of communities that had some serious issues, both financial and otherwise, when I arrived and I was able to work through that with those communities and help them stabilize and gain respect to the community. And I have a background in municipal electric departments and Mansfield has a municipal electric department. And to some people, that's a mystery. Electric departments aren't a mystery. They operate just like all the others. It's just, you know, you can get killed if you're not careful with them. I left after seven years in Mansfield. We have a saying in our profession that friends come and friends go, but enemies accumulate. And they do. And seven years is actually a pretty good run. I have noticed school superintendents don't tend to last that long even.
Not anymore.
Which is surprising. But, and the jobs are similar in some ways. I worked, after I retired, I worked as interim in Spencer. Helped them through a few issues and helped them find the right person and they have a really good town administrator there. Some of the situations are similar, except Spencer's more like the Blackstone. They're big and East Brookfield is small. They're in a regional school and they had some of the same financial issues. Not as serious as these, I will tell you, but they had them. And then, when I got the contact, I thought, well, I'll come out and talk. And I talked with the chair and the vice chair and seemed like nice people and hopefully I can add some professionalism to this while you're doing the recruitment. I will say this, I will not be a candidate for the job.
You missed the deadline.
Doesn't matter, I wouldn't be anyway. And I feel that's important to say so that people who are looking at the job don't think there's somebody on the inside who's going to get it. Ethically, if I thought I was going to apply, I would not have accepted the interim. Just how it is. But, I will not be a candidate and hopefully in less than six months, you'll have somebody on board.
They're gonna give their update tonight and I hear they're ahead of schedule, so that's...
And I'm fine with that. I can go back to retirement anytime.
So, Bill is here on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Right.
And he is now entering, answering the town administrator emails
Right.
on behalf of the board. So, if you need to contact...
Amongst many other things.
Yes. That's the way that the residents and board departments can get ahold of you. All right. So, the next announcement is a memo that was sent to all the comments committees and boards. Just as a final reminder that all warrant submissions for articles for the annual town meeting was due today by the end of the meeting. This will be on our...
It's like April 1st, is it saying here?
Yeah, I'm just looking for, to close the warrant. So, what we can do at this time is, since the deadline was today at 4 o'clock, they've been received and place holders for those needed. What I'd be looking to, based on the warrant schedule that was approved by the board at a previous meeting. Actually, I'm gonna hold this off to April 2nd, just so it can be listed appropriately on the April 2nd meeting. And we will do the official close vote at that time. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Yes.
It can be listed under new business, old business. Okay. Next is minutes. You have minutes from March 4th in your packet.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written other than changing the S to a Z in reposa.
Thank you, Tom. Do you think they know I was...
I know. Anything else? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Wait a second. Was March 4th a Tuesday? I think it was, but...
Yeah, it was because it was a holiday.
Sorry.
Was it?
Yeah. Yeah, it would be.
I just wanted to double check it.
No.
Because I don't, no, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday. No, two weeks.
It's a Monday. It's a Monday. Can you adjust?
Good catch.
Can you adjust for the, your motion to include the correction of the date?
It was a holiday.
It was. You think in February.
It was.
Martin Luther King.
So, it was March.
Well, the president stayed.
One day March 4th.
Yeah, that was our meeting.
And with also, changing it to Monday, March 4th.
Do you second his amendment?
Second.
Any other discussion being done? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Abstain? And abstaining? Here was somewhere. Probable.
Not that day, Bob.
All right. So, we have our correspondence. All right, so there is a, all right, so there is a correspondence that came in today. It is dated March 11th and we will be talking about this down under new business, under the town audit. So, I would just stick that to the side from Senator Fatman so that we can engage in conversation. We'll have to be thoughtful because it's not an listed agenda item because it came in after the posting, but I wanted you to have it for your information.
I think it could fall under town audit though.
Yeah. All right. You have the Mass Municipal Management Association, 2019 scheduled meetings. You have the BMTs, School Financing, Revenues, Enhancements, ROI. Their presentation here with all of their numbers, a newspaper article. So, that is there. I think when they came to us, this was in the works and they had their meeting shortly after that. So, this is their final product for you to look at. The next item, though it's not the town memo, we are abutters. So, we have been notified of a public hearing notice for adoption of comprehension plan amendments and zoning amendments. We'll ask them to have this available in our town hall for any resident who wants to look at it. It is 23 items long, multiple lots, along with a map. So, may affect some of our residents who abut their property. So, we'll keep that available for everyone. All right. So, our first department, our only department on the agenda tonight is the, our committee, our Town Administrator Search Committee.
So, I wanted to give kind of an overview of the process and things like that and then let you know where we are. So, since December, we've met nine times, including several Saturday meetings, which lasted more than five hours to get a town administrator selected. We had three subcommittees formed to address specific needs, the job description, the question scoring rubric, and the qualifications and salary. 18 applicants were considered. Their applications were received by US mail and had to be postmarked by March 1st. I mentioned that just because we did receive one by email on March 1st and that one was not considered as he didn't meet the requirements. So, we put forth the criteria and I made sure that we really stuck to that throughout the process. Everyone did an evaluation of their education qualifications on the rubric and we came up with a score and that's how we prioritize which candidates to bring in. We also did online social searches to make sure that what was stated in their resume and cover letter was accurate and that they were candidates on the up and up in terms of other things that we might find. Based on the scoring, we prioritized which candidates to bring in first. Six were invited for interviews and five accepted. One had found another position, which was very disappointing because they were the second highest scoring on the rubric. So, we really wanted to speak with them and that's kind of why we decided to fast-track a couple of candidates to present to you tonight. So, we have two candidates that we think are very, very strong. With the loss of that third candidate, we're very concerned to lose either one of these for your consideration. They have been waiting since January. Both of these were on the earlier side. So, we're more than two months in from when we received their application. And I think that initially when we had the charge, the three to five, I don't, that was selected kind of arbitrarily. It wasn't necessarily, you know, what do we need to do? We wanted to select, present a choice to you at least. And I was speaking with Jerry and he mentioned, you know, we pick the president with two candidates and that's a pretty big job. So, I think...
Maybe we shouldn't compare it to that.
Probably not a good comparison.
Unless you both put the third party.
So, that's where we are and we're just, the team feels really, really good about these two. And so, the thought of delaying in any way and not having these two available for all of you to at least take a look at would be devastating and tears would be shed by some members of the committee.
I think...
May I add to that?
Yeah, sure.
I agree with you fully. I helped Spencer when they were doing their recruitment and we did lose a couple of very good candidates.
Yeah.
Fortunately, they ended up with the one who was our number one anyway, but...
That's good.
You need to move. There are a lot of openings and not a lot of candidates right now for this type of public service.
In fact, there's a town administrative positions that are now open. These candidates, as Jen said, have been available since the beginning of, I think, the first electronic transfer that she did concerning the life, the opportunity...
Yes, when we put it to print and went to live.
These folks have been waiting some time.
Yeah.
And they happen to be the ones that, just by happenstance, happened to be the ones after the matrix that we put together, the rubrics we put together, the committees we put together, the hours we spent going through it. We've come up with a couple of good candidates. And I think the idea of this, indeed as I understand it, is you want a choice. You got choice. Whether it's three, four, two, five, whatever, you've got a choice. We feel very confident, very confident, that you, I think when you first gave us the challenge to try to put this all together in a relatively short period of time. I think Erica, you even mentioned, oh, I'm sure you guys can do it. Well, we did it. We did it because you asked us to do it. We took it damn seriously and we put everything we had into it. Hours of work to do this. We feel very confident that the two candidates we have are the people that you would need to help us run this town. We're very strongly that these people can help us run this town. And that's key. I mean, everything else aside, we've got to get this town back online. We need the leadership. We need somebody in here and we need somebody in here as quick as possible. I've heard Tommy mention a couple of times that, geez, maybe we should have done this back a number of months ago. We agree with you. And that's why we're quick stepping this as fast as we can and doing due diligence to everything you've charged us with to come up with the candidates we've got. I think it's only righteous that those things should be considered strongly by you folks and we should move as fast as possible to try to come to some conclusion with it. That will be your choice, but at least we've done our homework. We've done everything possible to bring it to this point that Jen has got in the envelope for you to take a look at. So, that was the charge. That was the key and that's what we took damn seriously to make sure it happened.
Well, thank you and your committee for putting so much time, effort, and hopefully bringing in those two excellent candidates to choose from. I don't have questions specifically about the candidates, but do... So, what is the process from here? You want to do two candidates and we'll decide if we like them and then you still have the other ones basically holding? Is that what you're doing or you're just bringing forth two and that's it?
So, I'm bringing forth two for you to... My voice isn't as loud as other people's. So, I think it depends how this goes, right?
Okay.
So, if you have these two and you think like, yes, I can select someone from here, and great. If you interview these two and decide, gee, I think we need a little bit more, just so you know, I don't, we've eliminated many of the candidates already.
Okay.
So, if we were, if you said, these two aren't it, we would probably have to go back and repost. So...
Right. So, just wanted to see where we were.
Yeah, we're kind of at the end of the line. So, that's the status.
The process was to get you the best candidates.
Right, yeah.
That was the key, to get the best. When you had 18, in fact, we said 18. One of the gentlemen we had unfortunately passed away. And he had sent in his resumes.
In January?
Yeah, in January.
And then we opened it up.
Passed away shortly after. So, that's why it went down to 18. We did, we did due diligence on all that.
Oh, sure you did.
And that's why we think we've got the right candidates and like to look at them and hopefully move to an interview stage before we lose them.
Right.
As Bill said, you're gonna lose these folks because both of these gentlemen that we've spoken with at length in the interview process, last Saturday and the Saturday prior to that, so two Saturdays in a row, both gentlemen indicated to us that they have other offers that they're entertaining, thinking about. So, we gotta kind of quick step there.
Right.
Get them in here.
I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, yeah.
Please, for, just for clarification.
Yes.
Three weeks ago, didn't you come to the board and ask for another month?
I did.
And kudos for not eating it. But, so, just so we're clear, there was, you know, I'll be honest with you. I thought, darn, we didn't get any good candidates.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, so...
It wasn't said, but it was the thought.
That's what went through my mind. So, I'm very pleased that we are where we are. But, I think that, you know, had me wondering.
Yeah.
Wonder if we had anybody. So, we're lucky that we do have two.
Yes.
And I think we can all agree, even Mr. Ross, you know, let's move forward.
Absolutely, Mr. Ross.
To address your questions, like when I asked for that, we did a really long meeting. We went through all the resumes and had that long conversation. That was before I had asked. That meeting took place after I'd asked for the extension. And once we all met, we were like, well, we actually do have some pretty good ones. And then we brought them in for interviews. We were like, these two are amazing. Yeah. So, and everyone was over the moon after the interviews.
Excellent.
So, I apologize for that stress that I put on you. It puts stress on me as well.
Yeah, we never give extensions to you guys. You know that. You tried twice.
You're trying to make 10 people happy and I'm sure you can appreciate that. It's challenging. No, that's fine.
The other problem we had was the availability of some of these people.
Yeah, right. Absolutely, I get that.
So, it was, and thanks to Jen's magic somehow, she was able to get these people in and actually come in and commit to come in on a Saturdays to sit with us for an hour and a half and go through a series of questions from, 17 different questions from all of us.
Right.
And then, a rather lengthy conversation about other things that they know about the town. Because we want to make sure we're not someone saying, oh, geez, what's the town like? No, no, no. These people did their homework.
Right.
They came in, they knew what the problems were. They understand what the problems are. And in fact, we've got even some people who gave us some remedies or some things to think about. So, we said, you know what, I like that. You get somebody here that's gonna hit the ground, move. And that's what we were looking to try to accommodate with folks from what you gave us from that charge.
Couple of things need to be clear, hopefully. First, the two finalists know that once the interviews are scheduled, their names are public and the interviews will be public.
Right, yeah.
That's correct.
As long as they know that.
Yeah.
Because sometimes, if they got a job now, they kind of go, woo.
So, I haven't notified the final two yet.
Okay.
Because I wanted to present to you first.
Right.
So, I, we can, if you want me to reach out to them and let them know, we presented you, your interview's gonna be public. So, based on the way that they saw the other process go, I don't think that will be a surprise, certainly.
Well, if they've been around at all, they know that.
Yeah.
The experience level is there that they understand that's the process.
So, I think...
And how are we gonna handle this? Because I still don't know what's in that.
I know, right? It's like a mystery. So, I think, I think your committee, all 11 of you, right, 11?
11.
Your time spent, I think, I think reaching out to them, the two individuals and sharing the good news with them that they've been selected. We will take the envelope this evening.
Okay.
We'll allow, once you make that contact, just let them know that someone, either Mr. Ross or the board, will be in touch with them to schedule that time. As I alluded to in our workshop, I knew that this meeting would, we were gonna have to do this. So, we had planned on after this meeting to, we're all gonna take out our calendars and we're gonna find the first available date.
Outstanding.
To do that.
Great.
I know I had been contacted about waiting until a new board was on board, but that's, doesn't...
That's not an option.
That's not an option.
No, absolutely not.
It's one member. Sorry, Joe.
It's one member.
One more hope.
And they are...
One more, one more.
And the interviews are public forums. So, people have forums, but public meetings and any individual can come.
I was gonna say, the candidates could come and...
Right.
And listen.
To each other, yes.
Yeah.
So, I think if you reach out because they're the person you know, you could just forward Mr. Ross or my name to them. And between the two of us, we'll try to, we'll work out once we get our date after our meeting tonight to schedule those times.
I suggest that usually a Saturday works best for that, especially if they're currently employed. And that way, they're not gone during a work week. And that also puts you in a situation where you can take a little more time with them. Not too early, you don't want them just...
A little more time during the day, not a little more time in a month.
Right. A little more time during the day. And then...
Right.
If you make an offer, you'll need to work out the details of that and I don't know if you have the model contract that is out there, but I can get that. There is a, kind of like the model contract I had for interim.
So, I think we, I think the contract, we could probably, KMP probably has the one that we used in the previous one.
They do, yeah.
Available and then we can look at that and...
Okay. Just trying to help pull that apart so you don't get stalled up in that stuff.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, thank you very much for the envelope. We're very excited to see what's in there, so.
Yeah.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, way to go.
And then we'll take that and then what we'll do is we'll, after the meeting, we'll... Once we set a date, if you want to wait this evening, we can always photocopy the resumes to give to people to, these people, to, or scan them and send them.
Yeah.
To have them available for, to look at prior to our meeting.
So, yes, in closing, I just wanted to thank all the committee members as well. Should I read my list? So, Tina Landry, Aubrey Bono, Lincoln Barber, Paul Bono, Rich Crivello, Chris Jewe, Jerry Finn, Gary Gill, Carl Hamilton, and Ron Landry. So, one thing, there were a lot of strong personalities in that group, if you know them.
Yeah.
And the meetings went really well. I was actually really pleased with how we were able to build consensus and largely everyone agreed, which at times was shocking. Pleasantly so, but like really shocking. So, it was a really good experience for me personally. And again, and I just wanted to especially call out the veteran members, so Jerry, Jerry Finn, Rich Crivello, and Tina Landry because we would say, well, how'd you do this last time? And they go, last time we just did this. And that was really helpful for me, that someone had already done that and to know that you can do this or like, you might want to relook at your open meeting laws on that one because I am terrified of anything that says law in it. So, having that guidance was very helpful. So, thank you.
I think the only thing I did want to mention too, and Jen, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the vetting of the candidates would be a confidential matter that would go through the police chief. Make sure we don't have bank robbers and all kinds of people there.
I was at the meeting when we discussed that.
Discuss that. That's, I'm using your reference on that thing as the piece. So, that will happen, that, and if both candidates clear that hurdle, which I'm, I'm going to, then indeed, that would, a quick step, you folks to do the interview process.
So, I just gave them the forms. I don't have them, so I'll let them know that the query form to fill out for the background check, I don't have it. So, I didn't...
We can coordinate for them to bring it in because I'm the designated person to run the queries.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Someone had to be.
Yeah, exactly.
We had all, we had all the licenses come through in December and so we had to reestablish the account and the person authorized to do that.
Okay.
So, that's easy enough for me to be able to do.
Okay, great. Then I, there were some questions from one of the candidates, like how long you can hold this information? How will it be destroyed? All that stuff. I'll forward those questions to you. It was just, you know, you're gonna be digging into very private things and, you know, they don't want them on Facebook or whatever. So, are those questions you can ask?
Yeah, so when you, so when you run the query, it's almost, despite what the school system say, you don't have to wait two weeks for your query. You put the name in, you put the information in, you hit the button, probably wait two or three minutes and it refreshes and your query's there. It basically will only say that there's something on the query, but otherwise, it's just a page that comes up and says they're free and clear. There's nothing, there's no evidence or no record. So, we just did some. I just printed out the one page because it was for a different department and I forwarded it to them. But, I don't even have to print out the page. I could report back onto the information. And that, of course, we would destroy afterwards. That's not something we...
Yeah, that's something that they just want to make sure of. And that's only gentleman courtesy.
Yeah. I don't even have to print out the page unless there's, and honestly, it might say there's something, but it doesn't specify. So, usually, I mean, I've interviewed people in the past for other things and they're like, oh, usually like, you know, they'll say...
I forgot to return a video.
Something's gonna come up when I was 25.
1993.
Yeah.
Something, there were videos.
Yeah. Something's gonna come up when I was 25 and I got caught shoplifting. I got caught shoplifting. I've had that happen. And you're like, well, thank you for being very honest. And when you run the report, there it is. So it will just say that there's, you know, something to look for. So I don't even have to print the page, I can just report out on it.
We just want to make clear understanding of how it should be handled, and I think that's-
Well, when those are confidential, and if there is something there, you are required to notify the-
The candidate.
That's correct.
And I, in my experience, if it takes longer than two or three minutes, they're looking at something.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why, maybe that's why they're like, specifically.
That's what I've seen with queries.
Okay.
Good enough.
I want to thank you both.
Yeah.
Thank you for your opportunity.
It was, it was actually fun.
It was kind of fun, even the five and a half hour meeting.
Yeah.
You can have your Saturdays back for now.
Ah.
So this is just kind of in, some of the documentation, the job description and things like that. I'll email it to you as well, but I wanted to give a hard copy.
We'll put it in the file.
So next, hopefully we'll have to do this again for a while, but if we do have to do it again, we'll have that information, we'll be able to fast track it.
I'm wishing anybody anything.
I want to add, I'm impressed with the work you did. I've only been here three days, but I can, I can tell you took it seriously and really went after it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at the end of our meeting, you'll see under new business, there's the warrant, this must be signed for the town clerk, and for have it posted in a timely manner for the April first election to occur.
There's the-
If you can just make a file.
Okay.
And then at the end of the meeting, we kind of just pass everything around with the signature. And we're going to need the, the March fourth meeting, the order Sluckman file. So we're going to talk about this one later, or just sign it later? Oh, this is just a signature.
Okay. So I just want to make, since we're on this item, I just want to make a clarification, because I know there's been some misinformation about question one.
Yep.
So question one is our two and a half override, and it is written on our warrant for eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Despite what other people may have heard, that is not true. There was a printing in the paper that was an error. I don't know how that happened, but there was an error in the paper. So I just wanted to make that clear on the warrant. And I think what the other things here, town audit. I don't know if we should talk about the under-town audit, or just go on here. Just in regards to the number, I know a lot of people are asking how we came up with the number. It's not a precise science, obviously. We don't have all the budgets in, but we do know we're in a deficit. As of right now, the deficit's about almost six hundred thousand dollars. And that deficit is a reflection of an increase in the school and basically level funding the rest of the town's budgets as they were level funded in 2019. So we brought forth this question on the ballot for the townspeople to come out and vote, and for the townspeople to come out and make a decision on whether or not they want to do this. And if it does pass, the townspeople again will come out to the town meeting and vote whether or not they want a budget to pass based on a recommendation, whether they want that budget number to be higher or lower for a particular department. So this is all up to the residents. If you want to vote on it, yes or no, come to the polls. And if you want to vote on the particular budgets in the departments, if you want our town to run as it did last year, come and vote, either way. So that's all I want to talk about on the warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item is the Memorial Day Committee. We have two names, and I know Cecil Gomes has been actively trying to get some more people together, but we have two names today for the consideration. It would be Cecil Gomes of ninety-three Kempton Road, and Pam Dean Kobetic of forty-three, forty-three, forty, forty-one, forty-two, I can't think of her number, Central Street. And then this way they can start some work in a manner which to observe Memorial Day in our town. So I'm looking for a vote to appoint them through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
I will make a motion to appoint Mrs. Gomes and Mrs. Kobetic to the Memorial Day Celebration Committee.
Aye. Second, is there any discussion, any comments?
Too good choice.
One of them didn't send it in themselves, so is that any?
I spoke to her, and she told me that this was coming from, so I know that she wants to be on the committee. Yeah, I have, I do have a message from her to be on the committee. Because I asked her to be on the committee, and she was tied up, and then Cecil worked some magic on her and got Pam to sign up, so. Pam.
Pam?
Yeah. You got her to join you on your mission.
I did work magic on her.
You did, you did. I didn't work magic on her. She told me no at first. She has a very busy schedule.
You have a motion and a second?
Yes. What are you, keeping me on track?
This is the last meeting, he wants to get out of here.
So there's a motion, it's been second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
Thank you. Vote is unanimous. All right. Central Street Bridge bid contract. I did have, the highway called me during my last meeting, and I wasn't able to take his phone call.
I met with, I met with the highway surveyor today. I forwarded some model contracts to town council and asked them to prepare an agreement or a contract for that work, informed them that the work is starting allegedly next Monday, that's the date they're supposed to start, and that there was going to be a meeting, a special meeting Wednesday evening, and I'd like to have that back by then. It should not be a real difficult task to prepare that, because basically you refer to the plans and specifications and then lay out who's doing what. The other issue with that is, I understand, the second bidder is talking about filing an appeal. That cannot proceed until you actually award the contract and have it in place. And then if that company wants to appeal, they'll appeal, and that could hold up the whole thing on that.
Right.
The surveyor is very confident, as is the engineering firm, that everything was done appropriately. If the, you know, it's the right of the second bidder to appeal, and the appeal body will consider that and go from there.
Right.
So I will contact Riley tomorrow and say, I'll contact him personally on the telephone. I sent it via email today, and he responded that he received it.
Okay, okay.
So I will contact him and try, and push that.
Yes.
That needs to get going.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, the work was to begin on the twenty-fifth, so if the other second bidder, there could be a delay in the start of the project.
Yeah. And the funding that you have, it's important to get that moving, so that it doesn't go by the wayside. Especially mass works, they get kind of touchy if you don't get it done, because they have a lot of interest.
Yeah. So the highway is on our agenda for Wednesday evening at the end of our budget information.
Okay.
All right. So the next letter is the engagement letter from Certified Public Accountants for the town's two thousand eighteen audit. I received an email late Thursday evening that unfortunately they would be unable to fulfill this contract, and then was removing their engagement letter.
Engagement letter.
Yep. So we have that, so we don't have to take up. The second letter that we received from Mr. Fatman and Senator Fatman and Representative Sada came in today. They do speak about the possibility of a state audit. I did speak to Bill today.
Right.
Do you want to follow up, or you want me to?
I'm going to follow up with the state to try and find out the timing on that, and when they're looking at it, because if they're looking at doing it late summer, that really is not going to be helpful. Or if they're looking to actually say, we want to audit 2020, rather than 2019, that doesn't do anything for us either, or even 2018, which I understand hasn't been audited. So we need to find that out, and the other problem with this is, and not to disparage our senator, but he can write that and make a promise, but unless there's an appropriation somewhere.
Right.
And unless the governor agrees.
We're on the hook.
We're on the hook. And so that's something you need to really find out. With, with your permission, I know of another firm that might, I might be able to talk them into doing an audit if the state isn't coming. Unless you feel differently, at least I'll talk to them tomorrow and try to find out.
Yeah. I think it's important, you know, just receiving this letter today, it doesn't talk about when or where the money's coming from. It doesn't talk, is it leftover money from this year's budget that we can allocate now? Is it the next fiscal year money?
What is the scope?
Yeah. So we have to get more detail. So you were going to reach out.
I'll reach out to DLS at least and start that.
Timing is critical.
Absolutely.
Right.
It's very welcome. It just depends on-
Right.
You know, and if they want to do it later, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're not looking a gift horse in the mouth, we just need to know how many teeth he has there.
There you go.
The other question I have, and I don't know if this is something you can ask, or you may know the answer. Would this audit satisfy our regular audit that we typically get through, private?
That's-
Every three years.
That's a question we need to know, but generally they do.
Okay.
And usually they come into a community and they do a very extensive audit.
Right.
And one thing to remember, that's going to take some time of your staff, too.
That was another question I had. Who's, who's footing the bill for the staff in our building? Is that part of the reimbursement?
No.
Or?
Nope.
So.
The reimbursement is strictly for the state people, and the time spent by your staff will be something you have to pay for.
Right. Which is fine if this is completely paid for, and we don't have another audit firm to come in, because we do have some dollars budgeted for an audit, and we can use it towards our own staff. So.
And I do want to emphasize, in my many years of doing this, an audit annually is absolutely necessary. And I've always asked audit firms to look at everything, turn over every rock. If there's a problem, I want to know about it so we can fix it. If things are good in areas, I want them to say that, too, because I think the public needs to know. And you, as the board of directors of the corporation, in a sense, in a very real sense, need to know.
So, so historically, we did do annuals. We had Mrs. Matthews, who was a longtime accountant, and she believed that when you do a three-year, you kind of pay a little more because of the lookback. So by doing it every year, it kept it in line. After she left, we had an individual here for less than a year. It did not go successfully. Mrs. Matthews came back and straightened out the books.
Yeah.
Which took a very long time, so the audit for that year could not be completed. So I know that's what happened in that year, and that took, that took quite some time.
Right.
So look forward to the next audit and having everything in line and in place. So I think if you follow up Mr. Fatman and get further details, because it's, it's not a hundred percent clear in here where the money's coming, there's no time-
When it's coming.
Or when it's coming. And I mean, I just, I know that they tried to get some money for the centennial, and the first year it got cut out of the budget, and it never came to fruition. So we had to wait a whole next year in hopes that it didn't get cut a second time. So, you know, we'll have to wait and see what that looks like, and maybe you can get us more details.
Okay.
And then reach out to other firms to see if they would be interested.
Yeah, the timing.
And time.
And timing. Obviously, if the state can come in and do it sooner than another firm, and they can provide us where the funding's going to come from, where it's going to come from, when it's going to come, that would be great. So, and if they can do a more expensive audit for free, that would be even better.
Right.
I'll work on that tomorrow more.
Perfect.
And as far as the staffing, I know they've been preparing for our audit, so some of those items have already been collected and-
Right, for our typical scope.
For a typical scope.
This scope could be completely different.
It could be further. And we have to remember that Old Town Hall, a lot of the contents are there, are in a storage unit that has no rhyme or reason. So.
Well, at least you have records.
We think we do.
We think we have, no.
They're there.
They should be there.
I worked in a community that the town hall burned down in the early sixties, and everything from that date back.
Right.
Gone.
Right.
A little half moon of those, too.
Right.
Yeah. The other, just to give you more, a little bit of additional background, one of the goals I established when I came here with the finance director was to do a comprehensive annual financial report, to comply with the GFOA standards, which we did. Now, I wouldn't suggest that right away here, but somewhere down the road, maybe. That is complete transparency.
Uh huh.
And it's, it covers everything from soup to nuts. First one is hard, after that it's pretty easy. And if you're ever going to borrow any money, it helps your bond rating, having that.
Right.
Only twenty-five communities in the whole Commonwealth produce one.
That's good information.
That's the standard you got from me in getting this stuff done.
So should we perhaps vote on this to say that we'll look into this more?
I'm, I think it's just standard to get more information.
Are you asking to, so we can put a placeholder? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, and to just kind of say that we're not just like looking at this as a, oh, okay, good, but we're actually committed to making sure that we'll investigate this and make sure to see.
I think he's going to get some information, then come back to the board with it for the next meeting.
I'm just saying, just as a goodwill type move more so.
It's an agenda item. It's going to fall into old business. It has to be done one way or the other, so it's not leaving our agenda until it's, until we have it.
Definitely not.
As soon as I have information, I will email that to each of you, so that you have that. I'll review it with the chair first, so she knows what's her, but I'll make sure all of you get that.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Erica, do you want to report out on the Garden Wonders? So Garden Wonders, we met with them last week, and they are the cannabis retail applicants out of Marty's Fine Wine. We went back and forth with contract with them, host agreement. We, I think, we got a final one that was reviewed by our attorney. We just need to have it signed.
Yep. So that's what I'll be looking for tonight.
Right. They came in and they applied for the special town permit. One question I do have, and I don't know if you know this, Bill, about the bylaws. Has the state approved our bylaws? That was one of my questions.
Today.
Okay, good, good.
And that was, I was going to report that in my, in my report.
Well, because they had till, what, the seventeenth?
Till today.
Sixteen.
They had till today. I knew we were like right there.
So when I met with them, I did, when they went for their special town permit, I did tell them that our bylaws were technically not approved yet, so it might not go through, but it did.
It were approved, and with, that was a zoning change, correct?
Yeah.
Zoning changes, once they're approved, are retroactive to the date the town meeting acted on. And so there's no problem with the special permit application coming in early, as long as everybody understood that.
But I get, I want to give them the heads up, so there wasn't a surprise.
Right.
Surprise. So, so they're on track. We'll get all of their permits. They're still waiting to hear from the state, which is a longer process than-
Right.
Right.
I think they should hear back in about, within this month or so, they're hoping, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
The preliminary.
And even then, it will be a while after that, because then they have to go through all their construction and inspections.
They're hoping for the late fall, which is an aggressive schedule.
Yeah. You're looking at late fall, early winter.
Yeah. So, but their hopes is fall, but we'll see if that happens.
Right.
Is there, are there any properties around that that might object to the project?
I would, I would be surprised, because it's a very desolate area.
Yeah. They, the, they're taking part of a building, which is owned by the same company, relatives. And there's no other Millville buildings nearby, because it's cut off from the highway.
But they are notifying more than they have to in the area.
There might be some on the Oxford or North Smithfield side.
The butters.
Yeah. I went through that, and one property owner vowed to appeal the special permit, appeal the building permit, and frankly, I don't know where that stands. So that could tie you forever.
Yeah. So there was zero residents at the special permit.
At the public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing that I was at, there were no residents, other residents. There are a couple of board members, but, so I don't think there were any people that were appealing that I know of.
No, I don't think so.
And that can be some revenue for the town, but you won't see it, take advantage of it for the 2020 budget.
Oh, right.
It's not going to happen.
No.
Their, their market projection is six point eight million.
Okay, so you get three percent of that.
Three percent of that.
Yeah.
It's a good piece of change.
The market doesn't saturate it before that.
And we negotiated to have sixty thousand dollars before the doors open as a deposit, so. Yes. Once we sign off.
But that's, that's within the contract, but it's not always, like, there's some that we have to hold until the door is-
Right, it's a deposit. So, so we can't spend the money yet.
Right. Chickens before they hatch. So I'm looking, so we left our last meeting, we met with the individuals, we sent it back to our attorneys. Erica took point with the attorneys and the things, and so what I'd be looking for is a motion to allow me to sign the host agreement. Let me just read the, the community, host community agreement with Garden Wonders.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes? Vote is unanimous.
We did skip over open board positions on the business.
Yep. Diane, I had asked her at a late date to get me the positions Tom, you had asked. So, what we'll do is we'll get those and we'll post them online and we'll read them off at our next meeting.
If we could get those on cable also, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yep, I have cable there. Yep, we'll do that. All right. Selectmen's Farm.
We're going to do the rest of the re-isms. Where are we?
Yeah, we're next.
Okay.
Anything on the Selectmen's Farm?
That was my error.
Okay, so in the past bill, because we didn't have an administrator, under the administrator item, everybody was kind of picking up slack.
Okay.
So, I think most of these things are dwindling down or can be reported out through our Selectmen's Farm. So, in the future, the administrator section here will be your section.
Okay.
And if there's anything tonight that you may want to bring to our attention, we can have those.
I'd like to give you just a few observations that I've had after a short week, but I think, I think they're important for everybody to hear. One is, the staff in the office is very hardworking, loyal, believe they're competent, know what they're doing. Morale does have some issues because everybody's nervous about the financial situation and where things are going. They understand what's going on, but you know, if you were employed in that situation, you might be a little concerned about it as well. But I can tell you, they are good, good people and they do care about this organization. I've met with the police chief on a couple of occasions. You have excellent leadership there, in my opinion. He knows what he's doing, he's experienced. And one of the kind of nice things that he's done that I think has benefit to Millville is he's brought some experienced officers here who have retired from other departments, primarily, I think, in Rhode Island.
Right.
And that gives you the benefit of a lot of experience because new police officers are like anybody else in the job. It takes a while to get your feet on the ground and know. And because those folks have health insurance through their retirement, that's saving you a considerable amount of money on that. I know there's been, I guess, some discussion about looking at one officer per shift. I will tell you, the years that I've been at this and I also had nine years on the State Law Enforcement Commission in South Dakota as a member, you need two basically at all times because that is a way, a sure way to have either a citizen have a problem or the officer or both with that. And drugs, domestics, domestics are the worst because one party has to go and the other one then sees their party leaving and they often turn on the officer. So, you need to have those two people for their safety. I actually am aware of a state trooper in South Dakota who was murdered by a prisoner when he was, and the officer was all alone. And he didn't do his job quite right, I will admit that, but if there'd been two people available close by, that might not have happened. So, that's, that's a thought moving forward. We've mentioned the current budget deficit. It is about $587,000. Just for one number, the school increase is $352,000. If you take the prop two and a half and the new growth numbers that we're estimating together, the school increase exceeds those two numbers by $216,000. That cannot, that can't go on. And I'm not criticizing the schools. I've worked with them, I know the challenges they face, but financially that can't continue or the community just won't be doing anything but schools. In the past, the towns used, from what I can tell, pretty much one-time revenues and stabilization funds to balance the budget. That well is pretty dry. It just, the money isn't going to be there and money that came from the sale of land last summer and other items of that type won't be available until this year is done and free cash is certified. So, you can't use that to appropriate against this budget. We talked about the audit. I think that's absolutely necessary to get that done. You said the same thing I did, or I was thinking earlier, and that is, the town administrator, the finance committee, the selectmen, all look at the budget and in essence, make a recommendation to the legislative body, which is the town meeting. And in the current circumstance, the town meeting has little or no flexibility to look at the needs of the community and move forward with that. And it is unfortunate because, you know, the town meeting is supposed to make that final decision and weigh those things and say, "Yeah, we want to do this, no, we don't want to do that." And they don't have that flexibility at this juncture. Now, maybe some people don't want them to, but in the end, the town meeting is the decider.
Okay, please elaborate though, why we don't have that flexibility right now?
Because you don't have the resources.
Thank you.
The financial resources to make that happen.
Just wanted to make sure everybody got that.
I'm just reflecting on what I see. I'm not saying citizens vote this way or vote that way. That's none of my business, but I'm reflecting on what I see as, you know, the expert who's 30 miles from home talking to you. I have, I've watched this before and in the end, I've always believed the citizens make a decision and get what they feel is right for them.
Yep.
It has to be that way in our system, but I think we need to make sure that there's an understanding of what's going on, so the information is there. So, enough said on that.
Thank you. Andrew doesn't have any items unless you have something you want to.
To know the status of the public forum, where was that? Because I remember we mentioned it.
Yep, that's with legal. It was sent to them. When it was sent, there's a backlog because we had a contract, the Garden Wonders contract. So, I emailed them with a punch list of about a few things with prioritizing which one goes first, but we voted on that and we're just waiting for the approval from the attorney. I haven't heard from them.
Not so much the approval, but how we do it right.
Just to make sure that it's in line, yeah.
It's worried.
Yep.
Because it is coming back.
Yeah, it's coming back, yeah. It's not a question. Yep. Erica, anything on your items?
So, obviously, we got the update from the TA search committee. Just want to say thank you again to that committee. You guys did a great job. Appreciate it. BBT flyer. So, as of right now, to do basically a postcard flyer, got a quote from them for a small postcard, nothing fancy. It's like $1,000 plus postage. Obviously, we'll have to, if we want to pursue that, we'll have to look in our budget.
See what we have left.
Get some crayons, get those elementary school kids to work, you know? So, that's all I have on that for those updates.
I'm going to throw my update towards Bill. You've obviously talked to the chief a couple of times and for some reason, he's not getting back to me. I need three dates approximately, just a couple of evenings that I can send to the union so we can get together and hash out this firefighters' contract. I emailed his secretary or, I don't know, it's not his secretary.
I will talk to him.
Clerk.
The clerk today, hoping she might have better luck, but I mean, we all know everybody's busy, so.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Excellent.
Is that a conference till Wednesday?
Oh, is he? Okay, well, then I won't talk to him tomorrow.
I'm going to explain it. Always include.
Good.
Always include Trish. She keeps them on track. All right. Joe, nothing on the marijuana, we're good, huh?
Well, we're good if you sign the contract, the host agreement. They'll be in business hopefully soon.
Sooner rather than later.
All right. So, undermined, I have the warrants, which is, let's see, the first warrant I signed since our last meeting was for $55,000, uh, $55,149.84 that had a bump in it because there is a snow and ice payment in there. And the second warrant that I signed since our last meeting was for $37,912.15 and that's pretty much standard rate of our weekly payroll and.
Do you know what the snow and ice is at right now? We have to be at least $50,000 over budget, I'm guessing.
I did speak to Brian at one point, I can't remember. He did give me enough.
It's like doubling the number, 80 budgeted, it's close to 100.
If I guess, I'd be lying. I can send that out in an email if you want. I can ask Brian.
I talked to him about it today and he said he expects the last of the bills to come in and we don't get any more, we don't get any more snow.
Still March, right. Yep.
I don't see any snow in the forecast, but it's New England.
Those April storms get you.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I know.
Right.
Yeah, I grew up in South Dakota.
You got them all. The other item is, this board will be sitting down to schedule some meetings. One is for the new town administrator, one is to complete our budget, one is to schedule with Bill and our accountant for the override presentation. With that, an email will be set up for residents to send in their questions so that those questions can be incorporated into that presentation. We'll keep that email live till about, I think we said the Thursday prior, so stay live until the 28th in which people can still submit questions. They will be answered and we'll have a designated webpage, so as new questions come in, they can be answered and it will be on, on the webpage for frequently asked questions.
Has that email been set up yet?
No, we need to do that. So, we'll do that and we'll, we'll get it out there.
Thirty dollars.
For another $30. So, we short-lived though. So, we'll get that there and then that way it just goes and that can be accessed by those who will be working on that presentation. So, tonight we need to sign the, see, I have the Central Street Bridge on here. Okay, so it'll be the March 4th, the warrant, which we already voted on this evening to assign, Garden Wonders contract. Our next meeting is April 2nd. It's a Tuesday due to the annual town election on Monday, April 1st. Originally, we had some executive session items, which we do not need to take up tonight, so we will not be having executive sessions. So, when we adjourn, we are done. Okay?
I have one quick question. For signatures, it only has minutes. Does it have to have all of them for us to sign it or?
No, because we voted earlier to, to sign the warrant.
Okay, I'm just.
So, let me just go back. You know, Erica, you spoke on the warrant? So, we did not do a, we, I just need a motion to sign the warrant for the annual town election.
Make a motion to sign the warrant for the annual town election dated April 1st, 2019.
The 2nd?
2nd. Andrew can have it.
Okay. All those in favor for signing the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, this was our meeting. So, we're going to sign those three items.
We're two.
Two items.
One.
And I will sign the Garden Wonders when it comes back from the attorney.
And I'll sign this, regardless of the year.
What are you signing over there?
Yeah, your last signature. So, what's today, the 18th?
I believe the Garden Wonders is in the email.
It's in.
All set.
Okay.
From the attorneys, from.
From Garden Wonders. I just saw that.
Do you want me to review it again or did you review it?
I have not had a chance to review it.
Okay. So, if you want to sign and give back to, I'll review it.
Okay.
Tonight or tomorrow?
Perfect. Perfect. As we finish up these signatures, I want to thank Mr. Raposa for his numerous years here on this board. What, six?
Six.
Six years here and a few years on the finance committee prior to.
Six more.
Six more, so you're 12, 12 years deep. I want to thank you for your, your time, your dedication, your mentorship, your friendship and, and I wish you a happy second requirement and I know you're still around.
Joe, you still have 12 more days of work.
Yes, you're not quite done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, my mission really never really got fully accomplished in that I, I wanted to see the town further ahead than what it is, but I'd like to thank all the people who contributed, the search committees and the boards and the committees that continued to, to keep the town viable and keep us going for a future, better promise, a promised future. I appreciate, I appreciate all the town folk. I'm going to stick around a while. I'm really sad.
Thank you. So, before we make Joe cry.
Too late.
It is 8:09 and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
She moved.
2nd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming.